Hallelujah! And as we sing this song, patuloy po natin siyang papurihan, pasalamatan, dakilain ang kanyang dakilang pangalan. Hallelujah! Oh, the worship of you. Hallelujah! Sing and bless it as you run. Jesus is mine. Hallelujah! Oh, what a fortress of glory divine! Oh, hallelujah! Here of salvation, purchase of God. Born of His Spirit. Hallelujah! Washed in His blood. As we sing this song, this is my story. Hallelujah! My Savior, all that I love. This is my story. And this is my song. Praising my Savior. Hallelujah! And all that I love. Come on! Perfect submission, perfect delight. Hallelujah! Be sure so proud to us. Now birds on my side. Come on! Angels descending. Hallelujah! From above. Echoes of mercy. Whispers of love. As we sing this song, hallelujah! Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. This is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. Hallelujah! And all that I love. Hallelujah! Perfect submission. Come on, sing it up! Hallelujah! Be sure so proud to us. Now birds on my side. The angels descending. From above. Oh, Jesus! Echoes of mercy. Whispers of love. Oh, Jesus! This is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. This is my story. Hallelujah! This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. This is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. This is my story. Hallelujah! This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. This is my story. Hallelujah! This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Come on, this is my story. Oh, this is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior. All that I love. Oh, Dios! Narinig mo ang aming papuri at pasasalamat. Ito ang aming dalangin sa tanging pangalan ni Yesus. Ang lahat ng anak ng Diyos sumigaw ng malakas na amen! Hallelujah! 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 Narinig mo ang aming papuri at pasasalamat? Ito ang aming dalangin sa tanging pangalan ni Yesus. Ang lahat ng anak ng Diyos sumigaw ng malakas na amen! Hallelujah! 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 Hallelujah![1263.50]
Good morning friends, let us rise for our hymn of praise. Oh for thousands who seek my great redeemer's praise, the glory of my God and King, the triumphs of his grace. My gracious master and my God assist me to proclaim, to spread through all the earth abroad the honors of thy name. Jesus the name that charms our fears, that beats our sorrowseeds, tears music in the sinner's ears, tears life and health and peace. He breaks apart all curtains in, he sets the prisoner free. His blood can make the foolless clean, his blood a bale for me. His fix and listening to his voice, his love and that receive, the mournful broken hearts rejoice, the humble poor believe. In Christ our head you then shall know, shall feel your sins forgiven, anticipate your heaven low, and all that long in hell. This is the day that the Lord has made, let us rejoice and be glad in it. Jesus calls, inviting us in.
We are here gathered as God's children.
The Spirit calls, inviting us to listen. God calls us, adopting us as family. Let us pray together. Holy Spirit, as we gather in your presence, go through this space and through our lives, that we may sense your presence within among us, as we sing your praises, reveal your glory to us, that we may discover the gift of humility, a time of worship, to listen to your word, that we may hear your call, to all faithfully pray, amen. Open our eyes, Lord, we want to see Jesus, to reach out and touch him, and say that we love him. Open our ears, Lord, and help us to listen. Open our eyes, Lord, we want to see Jesus. Let us remain standing for the reading of the scripture found in the Book of Romans, chapter 5, verses 1 to 11, and it says, "Peace and hope." Therefore, since we have been justified through faith, we have peace with God through our Lord Jesus Christ, through whom we have gained access by faith into this grace in which we now stand. And we boast in the hope of the glory of God, not only so, but we also glory in our sufferings, because we know that sufferings produces perseverance. Perseverance, character, and character, hope. And hope does not put us to shame, because God's love has been poured out into our hearts through the Holy Spirit, which has been given to us. You see, at just the right time, when we were still powerless, Christ died for the ungodly. Very rarely will anyone die for a righteous person, though for a good person, someone might possibly dare to die. But God demonstrates his own love for us in this. While we were still sinners, Christ died for us. Since we have now been justified by his blood, how much more shall we be saved from God's wrath through him? For if while we were God's enemies, we were reconciled to him through the death of his Son, how much more having been reconciled shall we be saved through his life? Not only is this so, but we also boast in God through our Lord Jesus Christ, through whom we have now received reconciliation. This is the word of God for the people of God. Amen. We may now be seated as well meditate on the anthem by the Wasleyan University Philippines Chamber Singers. Let us pray together. Holy Spirit, as we gather in your presence, go through this space and through our lives, that we may sense your presence within among us, as we sing your praises, reveal your glory to us, that we may discover the gift of humility, a time of worship, to listen to your word, that we may hear your call, to all faithfully pray, amen. Open our eyes, Lord, we want to see Jesus, to reach out and touch him, and say that we love him. Open our ears, Lord, and help us to listen. Open our eyes, Lord, we want to see Jesus. Let us remain standing for the reading of the scripture found in the Book of Romans, chapter 5, verses 1 to 11, and it says, "Peace and hope." Therefore, since we have been justified through faith, we have peace with God through our Lord Jesus Christ, through whom we have gained access by faith into this grace in which we now stand. And we boast in the hope of the glory of God, not only so, but we also glory in our sufferings, because we know that sufferings produces perseverance. Perseverance, character, and character, hope. And hope does not put us to shame, because God's love has been poured out into our hearts through the Holy Spirit, which has been given to us. You see, at just the right time, when we were still powerless, Christ died for the ungodly. Very rarely will anyone die for a righteous person, though for a good person, someone might possibly dare to die. But God demonstrates his own love for us in this. While we were still sinners, Christ died for us. Since we have now been justified by his blood, how much more shall we be saved from God's wrath through him? For if while we were God's enemies, we were reconciled to him through the death of his Son, how much more having been reconciled shall we be saved through his life? Not only is this so, but we also boast in God through our Lord Jesus Christ, through whom we have now received reconciliation. This is the word of God for the people of God. Amen. We may now be seated as well meditate on the anthem by the Wasleyan University Philippines Chamber Singers. I am faithful and true, I am the word of God. I am the land, I am the spotless land. I am the resurrection, and we complete. I am alive forever, amen, amen. I am king of kings and lord of lords, I am holy, holy Lord. God almighty, which was and is and is to come. I am faithful and true, I am the word of God. I am the land, I am the spotless land. I am God almighty, which was and is and is to come. I am, I am, I am what I am. I am, I am, I am the great, I am. Good morning, church!
Good morning!
Nag practice pa ako, hindi ko naman pala makuha sa... Good morning, church!
Good morning!
I am very excited today, because I get to introduce our preacher. Good morning, church! Is one greeting I always look forward to in the General Conference of 2016. Those of you who were there would remember the Chair of the Calendar, who would greet us each morning with a wide smile, very pleasant smile, and then says, "Good morning, church!" The agenda for this morning is... And then we would go forth into the day, excited to do our work. Ganyan po talaga. And after the General Conference, when I attended the first meeting of the General Commission on the Status and Role of Women, I was very pleasantly surprised, because the Chair of the Calendar was already a Bishop and President of the General Commission on the Status and Role of Women. Bishop Tracy Smith Malone is such a blessing to the church, a joy to work with, because by her leadership in the GICOSTRO, we were always rearing to get our work done. Not just somehow, but joyfully, triumphantly, fruitfully. And I believe she brings that gift to us here as well. Bishop Tracy Smith Malone is a PK, like myself, who are PKs here. We always celebrate Bishop, our being PKs around here, and we're gonna sing in one of the services. And she was born in Ann Arbor, Michigan, and was raised in Chicago, Illinois. And she is the daughter of the late Reverend Willie and the late April Smith. She grew up in the United Methodist Church and accepted her call to ministry at the early age of 13. Ang bata naman, ano? She is married to Derek Malone, and they are the parents of two beautiful, very gifted daughters. Bishop Malone is the President of the College Council of Bishops of the United Methodist Church. She is also a member of the Board of the Tis of Africa University, and those of you who are very fond of Facebook would see her traveling to board meetings and all. And she is the Resident Bishop of the Indiana Conference of the Indiana Episcopal Area of the North Central Jurisdiction in the U.S.A. As Resident Bishop, she provides spiritual oversight, shares in equipping, teaching, and encouraging mission outreach, witness, and service, and serves as a shepherd of the church by providing a prophetic witness of justice, mercy, and unity. In your handbook, you will note that Bishop Malone holds a Bachelor of Arts in Religious Studies and Sociology, with a Mba. in Computer Science, and also a Master of Divinity from Garrett Evangelical Theological Seminary in Evanston, Illinois, where she was selected a Crusade Scholar, a Marcelo D. Pembroke Scholar, and Bishop Edsel A. Ammon Scholar. And she earned her Doctorate in Ministry from United Theological Seminary in Dayton, Ohio. Bishop Malone received the Distinguished Leadership Award from Chicago Black Methodists for Church Renewal in 2007, and was the recipient of North Central Colleges 2013 Outstanding Alumni Award and the 2016 Distinguished Alumni Award from Garrett Evangelical. from Garrett Evangelical Theological Seminary. And in 2018, she was awarded... She received an Honorary Doctor of Divinity Degree from United Theological Seminary. Bishop Malone is one of the reasons I am so very inspired to have in our Church women leaders, women bishops. Friends, let us welcome the President of the Council of Bishops of the United Methodist Church, Bishop Tracy Smith Malone.
Thank you. Thank you for that beautiful welcome and introduction, Amin. It is such a joy and a privilege to be with you this week, to join you in your conference, to worship with you, to give glory and praise and honor to God, and to be a part of the important and sacred work that you will do together this week. To my colleague bishops, to all of the delegates, conference leaders, and staff, guests, and visitors, to all of God's beloved, I greet you with the love and the joy of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. I bring you greetings on behalf of the Council of Bishops of the United Methodist Church, and also extend greetings to you from the Indiana Episcopal Area. In this very room, there is quite enough love, and there's quite enough joy, and there's quite enough peace for all of us because Jesus is in this very room. From the moment I walked into this auditorium, it's amazing how the Spirit of God can transform a space into sanctuary. We know that we are in the presence of the Holy even as we gather for worship to do our worshipful and holy work. So this morning, I invite you to open your hearts to receive the gift of God, the Word of God that God has for you this day. Let us come into this worship experience as vessels that are open to the movement of the Holy Spirit, and let us allow the Spirit of God to take up residence in our hearts. I invite you to pray with me. Lord God, open our hearts and minds by the inspiration of your Holy Spirit that we may hear a word of promise and hope from you. I ask, oh God, that you would remove any barriers that might hinder us from surrendering ourselves to your will. And I ask now, oh God, that the words of my mouth and the meditations of all of our hearts together would be acceptable to you, oh Lord, for you are our strength and our Redeemer. Let the Redeemed of the Lord say, "Praise the Lord." Let the Redeemed of the Lord say, "Hallelujah." Let the Redeemed of the Lord say, "Amen." I want you to reflect with me in these next few moments on the theme, "Rejoice in Hope." Say that with me, rejoice in hope. As we enter our epistle text already read in our hearing, Romans, Chapter 5, verses 1 through 11, Paul begins with a proclamation of truth, a proclamation of promise, a testimony of faith. He begins with a revelation from God. He declares without hesitation or reservation that those who believe and have faith in Jesus Christ are justified by faith. We have peace with God through Jesus Christ, and we are covered by a full measure of God's grace. And we can rejoice and even boast in our hope of sharing the glory of God. And not only that, he says that we can boast in this hope even when we suffer because we know that through faith and hope in Christ, that suffering builds our endurance, endurance builds character, and character generates hope. And hope does not disappoint us because God's love has been poured into our hearts by the power of the Holy Spirit that has been given to us. Christ died for us while we were yet sinners, and that proves God's love towards us. Paul was writing this letter to both the Jewish and the Gentile Christians in Rome in order to persuade them to have a deeper and an abiding faith in Jesus Christ. But not just to have a deep enough faith for their own edification, but to have a deep and an abiding faith so that they can build each other up in faith, to inspire each other towards peace, to inspire each other towards reconciliation, to inspire each other towards healing, to inspire each other towards greater discipleship, to inspire each other towards love. Reminding them that the gift of faith, the gift of grace, the gift of reconciliation are God's gifts to us out of God's unconditional love for all of us. Not because of who we are, not because we're so good, not because of what we have done or how talented and gifted we are, not because of how smart we are or credentialed we are or sophisticated we are, but because of who God is. The gift of the glory of God, God's grace and endless mercy is what empowers us to be faithful and hopeful even when we suffer and going through trials and tribulations. It is this power and God's grace and endless mercy that sustains us when we are experiencing disappointments. It is that same grace and endless mercy that keeps us buoyed up and lifted up when we find ourselves growing weary and tired even in doing good. The gift of the glory of God that is in us, the Holy Spirit is what sustains us and inspires us to persevere, to remain steadfast, and to be able to be still and to know that God is God, that God is our refuge in times of trouble, that God is our strength when we are at our weakest, that God is our fortress that covers us and protects us at all times and in all places. Christ in us, working in us and through us is the hope of God's glory. And Paul, as a testimony of his own transformation through Christ Jesus, declares that we can boast in this hope even when we are suffering because hope never disappoints us because God's love has been poured out into our hearts through the Holy Spirit that has been given to us. Hope, hope not being wishful thinking, but I'm talking about the kind of hope that is confident expectation in God's promises and in God's provisions. Like the songwriter said, "If it had not been for the Lord on my side, where would I be? If it had not been for the Lord on my side, how would I have been able to deal with this pain that I've been going through? If it had not been for the Lord, how did I press through the hurt? How did I press through when my spirit was crushed? How did I press through when my heart was hurting? If it had not been for the Lord on all of our side, where would we be?" Hope does not disappoint us because God's love has been poured out into our hearts through the Holy Spirit that has been given to us. This hope, say, "Hope." Hope, I'm talking about a relentless kind of hope, not wishing for something to happen. I'm talking about, again, expectation, trusting that God's mercy, that God's healing, that God's justice, that God's desires will prevail in our lives. And this hope and glory of God, God's justice and holiness and mercy and truth and love is what God expects to be boasted and manifested in our lives. Let us never be ashamed to talk about the glory of God. We should never be ashamed to give our testimony. We should always be prepared in season and out of season to give witness to how God's grace has been at work in our lives. Prophet Isaiah, Chapter 40, verse 28 through 31, says this, "Do you not know? Have you not heard? The Lord is the everlasting God, the Creator of the ends of the earth. He will not grow tired or weary, and His understanding no one can fathom. He gives strength to the weary. And young men and women, even though they stumble and fall, but those that what? Hope in the Lord will renew their strength. They will soar on wings as eagles, and they will run and not grow weary. They will walk and not faint." This is the hope into which we are to rejoice and boast. This is the hope that inspires us to share the good news of Jesus Christ. This is the hope that inspires us to show up in the world, offering God's grace and mercy and peace and reconciliation. I remain convinced that the gospel of good news, the mission of Jesus Christ, and the followers of Christ, the body of Christ, known as the Church, yes, even the United Methodist Church, is still God's hope for the world. And the clarion call on all of our lives is to walk in this hope. But to walk in this hope, our calling is not just to fulfill the mission of making disciples of Jesus Christ for the transformation of the world. Our first calling is to be a disciple because disciples do what? Make disciples. There's a clarion call on all of our lives to be disciples first. Not pastor, not lay leader, not choir member, not church member, not district superintendent, not bishop. Those are our roles, and that is our work. But our first calling is to be a disciple of Jesus Christ. We are called to follow Jesus, and we lead others by being lead followers of Jesus Christ. Disciples make disciples. It never ceases to amaze me how we defined ourselves as the Church, whether here in the Philippines or in Europe and Africa, in the United States, wherever we are, it never ceases to amaze me how we define ourselves. We say that we are the Church, we are the Body of Christ, we are the people of the world, we are kingdom builders, we are hands and the feet of Jesus Christ, we are laborers in the vineyard, we are a community of faith, and a list goes on. But what does all of this mean? What does it mean to be the Church? What does it mean to be the Body of Christ? David Bosch, a missiologist, in his writings reminds us that the mission of Christ, to go and make disciples of all nations, baptizing them and forming them in the way of Christ, is not primarily in activity the work of the Church. Mission is an attribute of God. God is a missionary God. God is ascending God. It is not the Church that has a mission of salvation to fulfill in the world, it is the mission of Christ and the Holy Spirit that includes the Church. The Church is not the mission. The Church is an instrument of God's mission. The Church is called and sent to go and make disciples of Jesus Christ, baptizing them and forming them in the way of Christ. So I ask us this morning, even as we begin this conference, as the clergy and the laity and the bishops and the leaders of the Church, I ask us, all of us, including myself, we have always asked this question of ourselves, how are we doing following Christ? How are we doing stewarding the mission? How are we doing inspiring love, inspiring grace? How are we doing working for peace? How are we doing in ministry with the marginalized and the poor? How are we doing with the healing of the nations? How are we doing going beyond our comfort zones, going beyond what is familiar, going to the margins, to the places where there's hurt and pain? I'm talking about in the trenches, in the highways, in the byways, where people are lost, where people are feeling abandoned, where people are lonely, where people are hungry. I'm just asking the question. And we all have to ask the question, how are we doing in the making of disciples of all nations, seeing all people, seeing everybody as God's beloved, and baptizing them in the name of Jesus Christ, and teaching them to obey everything that Christ has taught us? Disciples make disciples. And I need to say today that whether we know it or not, or even whether we are willing to admit it or not, sometimes the Church, uh-huh, sometimes the Church contribute to the brokenness of the world. Sometimes the church contributes to the brokenness in people's lives by creating this seemingly uncrossable chasm between the haves and the have-nots. Between those who think that they have it all figured out in faith and those who are willing to admit that we still wrestle with questions of the faith. Between those who feel liberated and those who feel hopelessly trapped. Between the middle class and the underclass. We create this sometimes seemingly uncrossable chasm. So I ask today, how are we doing? Disciples make disciples. We are called to boast in our hope. We are called to be disciples because disciples make disciples. And no matter who we are, and no matter what our story has been, God desires to use each of our testimonies to make a difference in someone's life. And how we show up in the world, it matters. How we talk with and about each other, it matters. How we talk about the church, it matters. How we show up in the world, it matters. Do we show up in love and grace and hospitality? Or do we show up stingy with God's grace? Do we show up inspiring love and grace and proclaiming the wideness of God's mercy and love? It matters how we show up in the world. We know that we are living in anxious and desperate times. And people are faced with so many inconsistencies and contradictions in their lives. And in the midst of this web of confusion and people looking for direction and purpose, there is the gift of the church. The church is a powerful instrument of God's love and mission in the world. And how we show up, it matters. Barbara Brown Taylor, she wrote a book entitled, "An Altar in the World." And she writes this, "The hardest spiritual work in the world is to love your neighbor as yourself. To encounter another human being not as someone you can use, change, fix, save, convince, or even control, but simply as someone who can spring you from the prison of yourself if you will allow it. All you have to do is to recognize that there is another you out there, your other self, in the world for whom you care as instinctively as you care for yourself." How we show up in the world, it matters. Disciples make disciples. We are called to be lead followers of Christ so that we may lead others to Christ. And when we are abiding in faith, when we are so aware of how God's Spirit is moving and at work in our lives, when we are not ashamed or quiet about our own testimonies, we can boast in our own hope. And it's in that boasting, it's in that glory of God that is in us that will draw all people unto Jesus Christ. John Wesley, our founder of the Methodist Movement, he says this, "I am not afraid that the people called Methodist should ever cease to exist in Europe or America, and I'm gonna add, in the Philippines, in Africa, and all over the world." But he says this, "But I am afraid lest they should only exist as a dead sect, having the form of religion without the power." So friends, I ask us, as we began this week, what would it look like if the church, the United Methodist Church, all parts of the church, what if we were to reclaim our power in Christ and reclaim our identity in Christ and reclaim our mission? What if we were to rejoice? And what if we were to boast in our hope in the glory of God? Imagine with me, how might the world and our communities and our villages be better if the church was on fire for the Lord? What if we were truly to live as a people who know that we are justified by faith? What if we were to live with the understanding of the promise that we have peace with God through Jesus Christ? What would the church look like? What if we were to live as those who are covered by a full measure of God's grace? What if we were not afraid to let our light shine, to rejoice and to boast, to brag about God? To tell about His mercies? What if we were to go into all of the world making disciples of Jesus Christ and baptizing and teaching people in the ways of Christ? What if the church really was to live fully into what it means to be a welcoming and hospitable church? If the church, I believe that if the church was on fire with God's passion, if the church was on fire with God's gratuitous love, if the church was on fire, living with grace, if the church was on fire, rejoicing in hope, people will come from near and far to watch it burn, burn with love and burn with joy and burn with hope. I close with this inscription, this sign, this plaque found over the door of the St. Stephen Church in London. And this is my prayer for every church, no matter the size of the membership of the church. And when I say church, I'm not talking about just the institutional brick and mortar. Wherever people of God are gathered, this is my prayer. Oh God, make the door of your church, the door of your people's hearts, wide enough to receive all who need human love and welcome and fellowship. Lord God, make the doors of the church of your people's hearts narrow enough to shut out all hatred and envy and pride and strife. Lord, make its threshold smooth enough to be no stumbling block to children nor to strained feet. But Lord, rugged enough and strong enough and powerful enough to turn back the tempter's power. Oh God, make the door of the church in your people's hearts the gateway to Thine eternal kingdom. May it be so. May it be so. Rejoice in hope and boast, brag about the glory of God, the love of God, and the grace of God, and the mercy of God that is at work in your life. And never be ashamed to preach the gospel. Never be ashamed to give your testimony. For in so doing, in so doing, as we witness for Jesus Christ, we are building up the kingdom of God so that God's will on earth will be done as it is in heaven. Amen.
We may now be seated and prepare ourselves for Thanksgiving. for Thanksgiving.
Christ our Lord invites to His table all who love Him, who earnestly repent of their sin and seek to live in peace with one another. Therefore, let us confess our sin before God and one another. Merciful God, we confess that we have not loved You with all our heart. We have failed to be an obedient church. We have not done Your will. We have broken Your law. We have rebelled against Your love. We have not loved our neighbors and we have not heard the cry of the needy. Forgive us, we pray. Free us from joyful obedience through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. Hear the good news. Christ died for us while we were yet sinners. That proves God's love toward us. In the name of Jesus Christ, You are forgiven.
In the name of Jesus Christ, You are forgiven. Glory to God. Amen.
I invite us to stand where we are as we join together in a great Thanksgiving. The Lord be with you.
And also with you.
Lift up your hearts.
Lift them up to the Lord.
Let us give thanks to the Lord, our God.
It is right.
It is right and a good and a joyful thing always and everywhere to give thanks to you, Father Almighty, Creator of heaven and earth. And so, with your people on earth and all the company of heaven, we praise Your name and join their unending hymn.
Holy, holy, holy Lord, You're the power and might. Heaven and earth are full of Your glory. O Sanabinga Ayas, Blessed is He who comes in the name of the Lord.
Holy are you and blessed is your Son, Jesus Christ. By the baptism of His suffering, death, and resurrection, you gave birth to your church, delivered us from slavery to sin and death, and made with us a new covenant by water and the Spirit. On the night in which He gave Himself up for us, He took bread, gave thanks to you, broke the bread, gave it to His disciples and said, "Take, eat. This is My body, which is given for you. Do this in remembrance of Me." And when the supper was over, He took the cup, gave thanks to you, gave it to His disciples and said, "Drink from this, all of you, for this is My blood of the new covenant poured out for you and for many for the forgiveness of sins. Do this as often as you drink it in remembrance of Me." And so, in remembrance of these Your mighty acts in Jesus Christ, we offer ourselves in praise and thanksgiving as a holy and living sacrifice in union with Christ's offering for us as we proclaim the mystery of faith.
Christ aside, Christ is reason. Christ will come again.
Lord God, we ask that you pour out Your Holy Spirit on all of us who are gathered here and on these gifts of bread and wine. Make them be for us the body and the blood of Christ that we may be for the world the body of Christ redeemed by His blood. By Your Spirit, make us one with Christ, one with each other and one in ministry to all the world until Christ comes in final victory and we all feast at His heavenly banquet. Through your Son, Jesus Christ, with the Holy Spirit in your holy church, all honor and glory is yours, Almighty God, now and forever.
The body of Christ.
Broken for you.
The blood of Christ, given for you. Amen.
Friends, we shall have ten stations, five in front and five in the middle. We invite you to go to the station closest to you. We will have one up there as well. Thank you. Amen.
Let us pray. Eternal God, we give you thanks for this holy mystery in which...
Let us pray. Eternal God, we give you thanks for this holy mystery in which you have given yourself to us. Grant that we may go into the world in the strength of your Spirit to give ourselves for others in the name of Jesus Christ our Lord, amen. Let's do that again, because all of us, let's all do that together. Eternal God, please stand. Eternal God, we give you thanks for this holy mystery in which you have given yourself to us. Grant that we may go into the world in the strength of your Spirit to give ourselves for others in the name of Jesus Christ our Lord, amen.
Let us pray. Our Father, enable us to rejoice in hope. Because what we hope for is none other than what you hope for us in Jesus Christ. And may you enable us to share your hope for the world so that this helpless and hopeless world may indeed have a hope that shall be fulfilled rejoicingly, trustingly in you. And now, may you receive the grace of our Lord Jesus Christ, the love of God our heavenly Father, and the fellowship and communion of the Holy Spirit, and send us forth into the world as disciples, making disciples, for the glory of your name. Amen.
I will sing of the goodness of God. All my life you have been so good. And all my life you have been so, so good. And never rather I go mabel. And I will sing of the goodness of God. All my life you have been so, so good. And never rather I go mabel. And I will sing of the goodness of God. And I will sing of the goodness of God.
We exist to bring people together, to make progress, to collaborate, to innovate toward our shared mission to serve our constituents: providing scholarships to help students follow their college dreams; delivering hundreds of grants for international educational projects; supporting a global network of more than 1,000 Methodist-related schools, colleges, and universities; delivering critical funding for our historically Black colleges and universities; developing clergy through training and candidacy programs to follow their call; the General Board of Higher Education and Ministry; helping build the Church of Tomorrow every day.
Friends, we shall take a break over...
There has never been a greater need for mission. In such a time as this, with the perils of war, climate change, and systemic racism around the world, people need to hear the good news of Jesus Christ. Working through people, partners, and churches in more than 110 countries, Global Ministries connects the church in mission so that churches and faith communities grow and thrive. Justice, freedom, and peace prevail. Health and well-being flourish across racial, cultural, national, and political boundaries. And people of all faiths live in dignity and security even when they face humanitarian disasters and their aftermath. God is calling us, every one of us, to mission. Find your mission at umcmission.org.
There's not many places in the District of Columbia where you've got that proximity of a holy space next to many governing or government public spaces.
It's really a sanctuary to me. It doesn't look like a church, but it's like really communing with the Lord.
Nous avons senti que ce bâtiment est de très grande importance dans la vie sociale, dans la paix au Congo.
The United Methodist Building is the only non-governmental building on Capitol Hill. Holds a unique place in the ongoing work of justice and advocacy.
Over the last 100 years, the building has been a central place to birth visions for a more just future, to develop social justice messages and bear witness to the church for new social reforms, and to advocate broader concerns for communities supported by religious principles founded on the Gospel of Jesus Christ across a hurting, hungry, and hopeful world. In 1968, organizers of the Poor People's March used the United Methodist Building as a space for ecumenical clergy to gather, organize, and strategize for the campaign.
And then a year later, there was really a part two that not many people are aware of, but the same leaders that were working on the Poor People's Campaign came back to advocate for legislation, and we were part of that.
On October 19, 1983, Coretta Scott King held a gathering in the Simpson Memorial Chapel the day MLK's birthday became a national holiday and spoke of her wishes that the holiday would be a meaningful memorial to nonviolence.
Injustice prevails when hopelessness persists. And I've been thinking about that because I think the building is a space of resistance and hope. And I think one of the things that I feel when I come into that building is just a great sense of hope because people before me saw this, had this vision of really responding to the gospel in a way that was pushing for justice and peace. And because of them, I'm walking into that space and continuing that tradition.
The importance of the General Board of Church and Society being on the holy hill, I think, is really important. It symbolizes the people. It symbolizes our faith. And it symbolizes what we can do to change the world and the systems that we live in today. So I hope that our GBCS building remains for another 100 years.
As we look to the horizon, we are encouraged by this structure of Christian Witness. We celebrate the United Methodist Building as an instrument to speak truth to power as well as a sacred space whose inspiration cannot be measured.
Right now, all of these satellites are orbiting Earth. Each are circling our world with the express purpose of communication and connection. Without them, we would be isolated. We've all seen the vital role communication plays in our world today. It brings community, hope, and understanding. Thanks to innovative storytellers, those who harness technology and share our stories, we see the United Methodist mission come to life. We experience our ministries in action, and we better support each other as we follow God's call. Communication draws us closer, knitting us together as we continue to transform the world and make disciples of Jesus Christ. This is the power of communication. Just like those satellites, there's a complex communications infrastructure in our denomination supported by United Methodist Communications and church communicators around the world. Let's take a closer look. In Europe and Central Asia, UMC News and local communicators boost awareness of refugee ministries and outreach to young people. In the US, local churches are marketing themselves in new ways to reach new people.
We have been able to let people know we're here, that there's a United Methodist Church here who loves them, and we've seen people coming, not only new to the church, but people coming from disaffiliated churches who are looking for a United Methodist Church to call home.
In Africa, every Episcopal office has access to the internet to better engage in ministry. In the Philippines, UMC TV fosters spiritual growth through its virtual video platform.
Our content aims to inform, educate, and entertain, sharing the Christian faith, the love of Jesus Christ, and who we are as a United Methodist.
Across our connection, we have adapted to new ways of working and interacting with each other. This shift has opened a new realm of possibilities. In the midst of the pandemic, communication helped local churches pivot to provide virtual worship and fellowship. The United Methodist Broadcast Network is expanding across the central conferences to include radio, television, web streaming, and social media to share the gospel. The power of communication lies in our ability to listen and then to respond to the needs of those around us. Ask the UMC works diligently to prevent the spread of misinformation in the denomination. UMC Connect delivers nearly 700,000 text messages each year, sharing updates and invitations to church members. Trainings across the globe are equipping communicators to tell stories of ministry in their own context. Communication helps us connect across time zones, continents, and languages to ensure we can continue to work together to accomplish our mission. 28.3 million visits to Find a Church in the last 10 years have helped people discover a local United Methodist Church home. Millions of people find inspiration and hope on United Methodist social media channels and websites. With content in English, Spanish, French, Portuguese, and Korean, umc.org serves members while resource umc.org supports leaders. Billions of people have seen advertising messages around the world that extend invitation and create new disciples for Jesus Christ. Communication helps us create a groundswell of pride in our shared heritage and celebrate our core values. It helps us show how our ministry is alive and active. We transform the world. Let's celebrate the ministry opportunities that innovation, emerging technologies, and storytelling bring to our lives. that innovation, emerging technologies, and storytelling bring to our denomination. We need them now more than ever.
Having a strategic communication plan will not only help to strengthen the Church's witness, but it can also help to create diverse platforms for discipleship formation and help to connect people to each other and in mission all around the world.
At all levels of the Church, communication leads us forward together. This is the power of communication.